Okay, welcome again, everyone. This is, you know, this is a great evening. We always look forward to this meeting in June where we get to recognize all of the academic scholars. My name is Mark Kilberger. I'm the board president. And I'm so excited, you know, I think back to that time where I think we're a little crazy and we had to deliver cookies and signs to everybody's house. So it is so awesome that we are all here together tonight to recognize our scholars. I'm just gonna take a second to introduce people. To my left, we have Ms. Stephanie Sloan. She is the board vice president. Then we have Kaylee Bennett. She is a board trustee. Ms. Christine Price, a board trustee. Ms. Nancy Pickering, a board trustee. Mr. Admis Godri, a board trustee. And then we have Mr. Ned Dale. He is the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Ms. Paulini, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Michelle McHugh, who is our amazing district clerk. And then to my right, we have Dr. Castore. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to Dr. McHugh.
All right, welcome, everyone. If I could have the board and executive team come out in front of the board table, please. Dr. Green will cover the protocol because he's good at that. But just once again, I want to welcome everyone. This is really, this graduation is truly the culmination and highlight of all the great work that happened in the district. We talk about "We Are Hilton," and people ask, "What does it mean, 'We Are Hilton'?" And it's exemplified and personified in this room tonight, and that's what we're celebrating. We're celebrating that we're people first. We're celebrating that we have integrity. We're lifelong learners. So it's extremely important, we're living by those cadet intentional values, and we are those cadet intentional values. So this is the future, and it's exciting to see the future. It's reassuring. Sometimes we turn on the news and we scratch our head and say, "Holy cow, what's going on?" But I feel very good about the fact that the folks here are going out and going to make a difference in the future, and you represent the cream of the crop here in the district. So congratulations and welcome. And with that, I turn it over to High School Principal, Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Castore. Ms. McHugh's just getting set up. I would like to echo what Dr. Castore said in terms of thanking everybody for being here tonight and mentioning that these scholars that we're here to recognize tonight completely exemplify our cadet intentional values that we strive for to live out in our district. To be here tonight, these students have to be either Ivy DePuma candidate or one of our valedictorians for the class of 2025. And so to be a valedictorian means you have a GPA of 97.04. To be an international bachelor laureate diploma candidate, you have to pursue a rigorous course of study over the course of two years that is very rigorous and it really prepares people for top-notch colleges. And so with that, we will start with our first student, an Ivy DePuma program candidate, Elena Malacca.
I love spending my free time sailing on the water and spending time with my family and friends. Over the years, I've participated in Math League, Hispanic Honor Society, and International Club. I will be attending Old Dominion University, majoring in biochemistry and minoring in business, as well as, we remember, on the sailing team. And I wanted to thank my parents for pushing me to do my best through all throughout high school and for all that.
Now we will move on to our valedictorians. I'd like to introduce you, Sophia Begim.
I enjoy running, reading, and spending time with friends and family. I participated in National Honor Society, as well as varsity cross country and track. I'm attending UALD, majoring in political science. And I would like to thank my friends, family, and teachers for all the support.
Next up, we have Gianna Bianchi.
My name is Gianna Bianchi. I enjoy hiking, hanging out with friends, and journaling. Throughout high school, I was a varsity cheer captain, a part of the varsity track team, National Honor Society, Hispanic Honor Society, a publicity officer, a student council, a part of Sources of Strength and International Club. This fall, I'll be attending UQ University in the Honors College, majoring in psychology through the pre-med and health program. And I'd like to thank my family and friends for being so supportive and always showing up to my events.
Eva Bruno.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to spend some time with my family and friends, a lot of my current employees. Throughout my time at high school, I participated in National Honor Society, Hispanic Honor Society, International Club, and Best Buddies. I will be attending St. John's, majoring in criminalology and psychology. And I'd like to thank my parents and friends for being supportive for my four years.
Tyler Tagov.
Tyler Coslin. I enjoy doing tap, jazz, ballet, and a lot of other styles of dance. This year, I was the leader of chess club, a member of the National Honor Society, and Math League. And this fall, I will be attending RIT for ABS, MS, and Electrical Engineering. And I'd like to thank my parents for being so supportive and my teachers for making classes interesting.
Madison DeGrave.
I'm Maddie DeGrave. I enjoy singing, playing guitar, reading, and spending time with my friends in my free time. I was part of Student Council, Drama Club, Sources of Strength, National Honor Society, and Teenure Video throughout my high school career. I'll be attending SUNY Janusio next year to renew my academic career, and I'd like to thank my parents for their unconditional support throughout high school.
Natalie Tuluta.
Hi, I'm Natalie. I like to enjoy spending time with my family and friends, and I also enjoy dancing. This year, I was part of Math League and National Honor Society, and next year, I plan to go to Rochester Institute of Technology to major in electrical engineering with Tyler. And I'd like to thank my family for always pushing me to do the best and better myself while supporting me along the way.
Yana Diakmalas.
Hi, I'm Yana, and I enjoy spending time with my friends and playing soccer and lacrosse. This year, I was a captain of the varsity soccer and lacrosse team and a member of the mock trial team. I'm attending Binghamton University to major in chemistry, then on to law school, and I'd like to thank my parents for always supporting me.
Our next student is unable to attend tonight. Her name is Isabella DiJaco. She does spend time with her family and friends. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Hispanic Honor Society, Dance Sources of Strength. She's planning on attending Virginia Tech, and she wants to thank all of her parents for supporting her. This is Tessa Guy.
I love to travel, dance, and spend time with my friends. Throughout high school, I have been the social media manager of Best Buddies. I'm a member of International Club, National Honor Society, and Hispanic Honor Society. Next year, I'm attending University of North Florida to major in computer science and minor in Spanish. I want to thank my friends and family who have supported me every step of the way.
Our next student is also unable to attend. Her name is Grace Green. She loves spending time with her friends and being active. She's a member of field hockey, National Honor Society, student college. She will be attending SUNY Binghamton, and wants to thank her parents, teachers, and coaches who have supported her along the way. This is Mallory Heiss.
I'm Mallory. I love to play basketball, hang out with my friends and family, and also line dance with my mom. I am, I've been a captain of the varsity basketball team and the varsity soccer team and a member of the National Honor Society. Next year, I'll be attending St. Bonaventure University to major in exercise science and play for the women's basketball team. And I want to thank my family, friends, teachers, and coaches for the support for everything.
Addison Helmer.
Hi, I like enjoying, I enjoy spending time with my friends, playing field hockey and soccer, and walking dogs around my neighborhood. I was involved in the Cadet Trading Post as the manager and treasurer. I was on the Cadet Robotics Team as the marketing lead, and I'm part of NHS, Math League, and Sources of Strength. I plan on to attend SUNY Ossuigo for accounting, and I'd like to thank my family, friends, and teachers for always supporting me.
Our next student was unable to attend as well. Her name is Olivia Johnson. She loves dancing and hanging out with her friends, a member of the National Honor Society and Social Strength, attending SUNY Ondiata, and thanking her family, her friends, and teachers for being her biggest supporters. This is Joanna Kalini.
I enjoy spending time with family and friends. I love playing piano, I love volunteering, I love making a cookie as well. Throughout my high school career, I've had the privilege of participating in Student Council, National Honor Society, French Honor Society, Dance and World of Cover, Art Club, and Math League. For my future plans, I plan to go to the Rochester Institute of Technology and study biomedical sciences with a pre-med route. And I have a huge, tremendous thanks to all my teachers, my family, and my friends for continuously fueling all my ambitions.
Sarah Kohler.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kohler. I enjoy reading, and I loved her high school reports. Throughout high school, I have participated in International Club as well as Hispanic Honor Society. Next year, I'm planning to attend SUNY Ossuigo for human resources management, and I would like to thank my family, teachers, and friends for all this work that they've given me.
Cindy Leinhart.
I enjoy spending time with my friends, shopping, and traveling. And in high school, I was a member of the National Honor Society, participated in volleyball, basketball, and lacrosse. And I will be attending the University of Delaware to major in pre-bech sciences, and I would like to thank my friends and family for always being my biggest supporters.
Angelina Will.
I enjoy going to the movies, record collecting, and spending time with my friends. I have been involved with theater, National Honor Society, and interact club. I will be attending PC University to study digital cinema and filmmaking, and I would like to thank my friends and family for always supporting me throughout the years.
Ava Mason.
I enjoy spending time with my family and friends and shopping. Throughout high school, I've participated in indoor and outdoor track and field hockey. Next year, I will be attending Negro Community College for radiological technology, and I want to thank my family and friends for being my biggest supporters.
Estee McKee.
I enjoy reading, watching movies, and going to Starbucks. I'm a senior video club editor in the class of 2025, Executive Council, Sources of Strength, NHS, and track and field. I'm attending St. Bonaventure University to major in strategic communications, and I'm also looking for part of the Honors College there. I'd like to thank my family, friends, and teachers as acting as constant supporters throughout my four years.
Amara Murphy.
I enjoy spending time with family and friends and playing hating. I'm a member of National Honor Society, French National Honor Society, track and field, stage crew. And next year, I'll be attending SUNY Albany and a major in political science. And I'd like to thank my friends, and particularly my family, for pushing me to do my best.
Olivia O'Connor.
Hi, I'm Olivia. I like to crochet, craft, create art, and spend time with my friends. During high school, I've been part of art club, ego club, and stage crew. I spent on attending Nazareth University for their museums, archives, and public history program, and I'd like to thank my family for supporting me and my goals.
Tyler Reisinger.
Hello, my name's Tyler Reisinger. I'm an Eagle Scout, a volunteer, team archery, helping all of my friends. I was the secretary of NHS. I was a mock club member, played varsity football, was a math league, and am a part of the CTE endorsement. I'll be attending Virginia Tech this fall and for aerospace engineering. And I want to thank all my friends, family, for building me to be the first man I am today.
Our next student was unable to attend this evening. Paige Siciliano. She enjoys playing softball, basketball, and hitting with friends. She's the captain of both the softball and basketball team, a member of National Honor Society, a volunteer in sports, attending Syracuse University. And we'd like to thank her family for being there every step of the way, and her friends that she's been going along with. We have Jack Smith.
My name's Jack Smith. I love playing sports and working out and spending time outside with my friends and family. I played varsity basketball this year with the captain. I also participated in Math League. And in the fall, I will be attending Clarkson University for chemical engineering, and I'd like to thank my family and friends for pushing me to do better every day.
Shana Weeks.
Hello, I'm Shana Weeks. I enjoy drawing, painting, spending time with nature, and hanging out with pets. I was in NHS, theater, musicals, and TNL. And I'm attending SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry and majoring in wildlife conservation. Thank you to my friends, family, and friends for environment and community awareness.
Patrick Weiselt.
Hello, my name's Patrick. I enjoy playing sports and hanging out with friends. I played varsity hockey for four years, tennis for two years. I was a math league member this year and National Honor Society member. In the fall, I plan on attending Rochester Institute of Technology, majoring in cybersecurity. And I just want to say thank you to my parents and friends for being there every step and pushing me about myself.
Grant Wood.
My name is Grant. I enjoy reading, watching, biking, spending time with my family and friends, and singing. I was a part of the Hilton Drama Club and Musical as the vice president and treasurer, as a member of NHS, a choral officer, and a member of Hilton High School's wave. I will be attending Nazareth University in the fall to major in English Inclusive Adolescence Education with a dual certification in English and Inclusive Ed. I would like to thank my family, friends, and educators for igniting my passion and allowing the classroom.
At this point, we're going to move on to our scholars who are both valedictorian honors and international bachelor laureate diploma program candidates. I'd like to take a brief moment to acknowledge Mr. Ackroyd, our Ivy DePuma coordinator. If you choose to do the diploma program, you get to spend a lot of time with Mr. Ackroyd. I've never heard anybody say they have to spend time with him. They enjoy it, and he does a great job leading the student's support group. So with that, Mary Burke.
Hi, I'm Mary. I love to swim, crochet, rock line, scuba dive, read, spend time, spend time with friends and family, and I also love to teach some lessons. Throughout my high school career, I was the co-captain and treasurer of the varsity swim team, the vice president and a chairperson for Model UN, the vice president of the National Honor Society, as well as a member of mock trial, stage crew, and Hispanic Honor Society. Next year, I will be attending Stony Brook University with a double major in marine vertebrate, vertebrate biology, and coastal environmental studies in the Women in Science and Engineering Honors Program. I'd like to thank my family, friends, teachers, especially Mr. Ackroyd, for always pushing me to achieve my goals and just always being there for me.
Sidney Fisher.
My name is Sidney, and some of my hobbies include reading, playing soccer, spending time with friends and family, and drinking lots of coffee. Some of my extra curriculars include being vice president of student body, a member of mock trial, a volunteer at Pittsburgh Volunteer Ambulance, captain and treasurer of the varsity soccer team, and then being a member in National Honor Society, Hispanic Honor Society, International Club, Math League, and Sources of Strength. In the fall, I'll be attending the University of Rochester, majoring in neuroscience and minoring in Spanish on a pre-med track, as well as playing club soccer. I just want to say thank you to my family for their constant support and love, especially my siblings Sam and Sean for being with me every step of the way.
Daphne Hicks.
Hi, my name is Daphne Hicks. I enjoy yoga classes, creative writing, baking, kinesics, spending time with friends, and I'm a very avid player of pop and sushi. I, throughout high school, I was the Model United Nations President and Chairperson, the President of National Honor Society, and a member of mock trial, International Club, and Hispanic Honor Society, Math League, and I'm a graduate of the Young Entrepreneurs Academy. This fall, I will be attending Cornell University's Charles H. Dyson School of Applied Economics and Management with double concentrations in business analytics and finance. And I'd like to thank all of my friends, families, and teachers, again, especially Mr. Ackroyd, who endlessly support me. And I'd especially like to thank my sister Gabrielle for always inspiring and helping me.
Natalie Kaiser.
My name is Natalie. I enjoy playing piano and reading, spending time with my parents. I've participated in Model United Nations International Club and Art Club, and was a member of the National Honor Society and Hispanic Honor Society. I will be attending American Power, Creation, and Biology, Army, Research, and Drive, and help my friends and educators to help me along the path of my life.
Alexander Kadeleski.
Besides looking absolutely dashing in that suit, I do love baseball, football, and basketball. I dabble a bit in harmonica and ukulele, and I am an artiste. I'm a cast member for the Hillen High School Theater Club. I am a student council representative, a top-10 Hillen High School math leader, and a French Honor Society member. I will be attending the University of Rochester with a major in astrophysics and a minor in political science. And I would like to thank my parents, my brother David, my dogs, and my friends for pushing me to always go above and beyond.
Andrew Paulini.
I am Andrew Paulini, and my hobbies are playing sports and spending my time with friends. I am a Sources of Strength Executive Council member and treasurer. I am the treasurer for NHS. I am a member of Spanish Honor Society, Mock Trial. I am the assistant captain for hockey, captain for tennis, and I attended one math league. I am attending Colgate University, and I am majoring in mathematical economics. And I was playing bar, sorry, club hockey and tennis there. And I want to thank my parents, my family, and my friends for ongoing great support.
Juliana Sutton.
Hi, I'm Juliana, and I have loved spending time with friends and family, dancing, and playing pickleball and badminton. This year, I've been a member of French Honor Society, International Club, and Art Club. Next year, I'll be attending SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forests of Aging and Conservation Biology. And I would like to thank all my friends and family for supporting me.
If we got one more round of applause for all of you. Last night's Bravo Night, and tonight's Board of Education meeting are always two of my favorite moments, we think, of the entire school year. What you have done, fails or prepares what I've been told you are poised to do, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to be a small part of that. Let's pass it back to you.
All right, moving on. We're going to keep going here again with administrative reports. Dr. Costor.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations once again to all the students and the families that we celebrated this evening. What a great accomplishment. I'd also like to recognize Damian Mesh, tennis. Reagan Paulini and J.C. Malin in golf for qualifying for the New York State Tournament. They just competed, so congratulations to them in representing the district at the state level. Also, I'd like to send congratulations to Northwood students Estelle Greiner and Olivia Standing, who attended the National Invention Convention in Dearborn, Michigan, with their inventions, the Seal Swiper and the Snow Snatcher. So, looking to hear their way this week, so when they return, looking to hear the great stories about their experience. Also, Merton Williams seventh grade health science students participated in a field trip to Charlotte Beach to clean up the area and learn about protecting natural resources. Students were chosen by demonstrating strong character and aligning with the district's intentional values, so congratulations to them. At Quest Elementary Science Day was kicked off by two of our high school science teachers, Carl Gout and Mike Rogay. It was an awesome start to the day, a lot of things that would engage you as a science student. I'll leave it at that without jeopardizing the amount of flames and smoke that was happening in our school. Great job by all involved in Bravo Night last night. For the number of awards that were given, it was done in a minute, or minute, it was done in an hour and 50 minutes, which I think is very effective, but it was done in a very respectful and celebratory fashion, so congratulations to everyone there. The Hilton Jazz Ensemble is going to be performing at the Rochester International Jazz Festival, and that will be in the Big Ten on Thursday, June 26th at 6:00 p.m., and admission is free. Also, thank you to everyone for helping make many of our year-end celebrations possible. A lot of great memories for our students and families, as we saw this evening, and that takes a lot of planning and support by our staff, so greatly appreciated. A webinar on bell-to-bell cellphone restrictions will be held on June 16th at 6:00 p.m. The link is available on our website. So if you recall, the governor and the New York State government have mandated next September for students returning to school that cellphones and other internet-connected devices and technologies are no longer permissible at schools. So, we will be presenting to the community what that will look like come September and answer any questions. That meeting will be recorded and placed on our website for people who missed it and are interested in catching up on that information they may have missed. And finally, I just want to wish a Happy Father's Day to all the dads and the fathers on the Board of Education. That's everything I have for you today.
Ms. Paulini.
Good evening. We are getting busy, well, continuing to be busy, I guess, in the office of instruction, but this is a really exciting time because we're wrapping up one school year and getting ready to plan for the next. We have over 35 curriculum projects that will be worked on this summer. Some of the highlights include a mining to new standards, so the Checkpoint E curriculum will be for world languages, so Spanish and French here in our district, will be fully implemented next year. We just finished year two of the Checkpoint A. That's a pretty significant shift in instructional practices with those standards, and our teachers are ready to get into the curriculum work this summer. They've been able to attend the assessment training at BOSI's over the course of the last two years to really help them understand that end-in-line approach to their curriculum planning. We also will be finalizing the NISSA Seline Earth and Space Science and Biology courses. Those will be fully implemented next year. There was a new administration of the new NISSA Science Standard in both of those two content areas this June. We opted to wait one year. You had an option of when you would enter into that cycle, so we will finish up that lasted curriculum writing this summer and implement fully NISSA Seline curriculum in September. This is a little bit of an advanced GS approach because we'll be able to take a look at the full assessment and conversion charts and scoring guides before finishing our curriculum writing. We'll also be working at the elementary level in continuing to incorporate the sciences of reading into reading instruction shifts. There's a number of different projects to support that work happening as well, along with many other content areas. Those are a couple of the heavy-hitting projects. Update for you on our home instruction, our homeschool. We talked about a year ago about moving back to an online platform in order to ease the submission of the commission of education, the reporting that families have to do. Although the product has great promise, over the course of this year, we didn't get to place, when people first approached, we felt like it was a great experience for the end user. We're getting much closer to that, and so we've sent to the amount to all of our home instruction families seeking to be volunteers that would like to trial that platform before we make full transition. So, we're giving to interested parties this week that would like to do that, and we're finalizing some of the training, and we'll work through July when the letters of intent are due to see how that works. And depending on how that rollout goes, we'll either continue forward until May 27, or we will abandon those efforts if it's not up to the standards that we're seeking, but very hopeful after our most recent round of testing. And lastly, our math and world language departments are up for program evaluation to begin in the fall. Those teams of volunteers were invited today, which is the program evaluation teams. Still have a spot in math, if anybody's interested. And those dates will start with some release. If anyone's got expertise in math or anything like that, you're certainly welcome. Those release dates will be in the early fall, and then...
That's math, teacher, too.
In the early fall for our initial stages, and then we'll work on our data analysis throughout the spring. I will also be bringing to you some of the conclusions that were drawn from the art and English K-12 program evaluations that were conducted throughout the course of the 24-25 school year. I'll give you an overview of what those action steps look like when we meet next, in next meeting. Happy to answer any questions that you might have? Thank you.
Mr. Dale.
Just a couple of quick updates tonight. I was a bit worried about replacing two assistant principals in the same school in the same month in a very busy June month. I am pleased to report that our recruiting efforts have been successful so far. The posting did close at the end of the day today. We have almost 50 applications for our assistant principal positions. We started screening last week. We have been screening all this week. We will be screening late into Friday evening to continue and finish our process. Again, I am very hopeful that we've set up an impressive timeline, but just to remember, one of the pieces is that we are short a day because we will be celebrating the 18th, so that just cut a day when we were looking for a day. But I am very pleased with the candidates and looking to add two recommendations to you at our next board meeting, so that Dr. Blood is not on island this summer, I promise. But I will keep you up to date. Teacher residency program, you might have remembered this, this is a joint collaboration grant program that is the U of R and Nazareth combining to offer a residency program. It's an ability for individuals to get their master's degree in one year. They not only have to go to class at night, but they also have to teach all five days a week, and so with one day being a substitute basis, that they can earn money. The one piece in our Zoom meeting today that I was able to learn that I was not aware of, I was aware of the $15,000 grant towards the tuition. They also get $15,000 towards the living expenses so that they can survive a year, as well as the one day a week of subsidy. So, again, it was great to connect with the other school districts that are currently in the program and have residence, but also we may have some opportunities to have some additional residents. And so I'll be speaking with the Office of Instruction tomorrow just about the possibility of having individuals join us. The only commitment that the district really has to make is identifying two teachers and then also having an extra substitute one day per week, which we really wouldn't mind having. So, I may be touching base with some people individually, but again, we have our own employee right now who's going to be going through this process. I think it's a great opportunity for us to learn about the residency program and also get our feedback on it. So, again, I'll be tracking that over the course of all these trips and keep you up to date, but this is certainly a good opportunity, and I wanted to make sure the board is aware of where we're participating. And that's all I have.
Okay. We're going to move on now to public comments. We do have a public comment tonight. I'm just going to review the public comment guidelines real quick. When I call your name, please stand and come forward to address the board. The comments are going to be limited to three minutes. Per speaker, questions and comments may not identify or address specific personnel or personnel issues. The board reserves the right to defer responses to collect additional information. Board might actively discuss the public comment unless it appears in formal agenda. Comments and questions may, must be communicated in an orderly and respectful manner, and the board may limit the length of the public comment, fortunately, in order to address other scheduled school business. So, Mr. Neary. I apologize that we do not have a mic.
We do.
Oh, we do. There we go.
Hello, and thank you all very much for your time. Thank you, the board. This is the registration background of myself and my family. We have two daughters that have graduated from Hilton High School. One daughter in Merton Williams, one in Quest, and one daughter in Mary Carriola. My wife and I have adopted two children internationally with disabilities, and they're in the process of adopting a boy with disabilities as well. We have trusted and continue to trust Hilton Central School District and this board. As a parent of a child in one of the 12-11 self-contained classes, I'm concerned about the class sizes and the future of the self-contained classes. I know that many of the classes have needed and continue to need a variance to go over the allotted class sizes. These kids, including my daughter, are in a 12-11, 8-11, and 6-11 class for specific reasons. By going over those class sizes, not only are you putting more onto the teachers and aides in those rooms, but you are jeopardizing the learning of our children. My daughter does not do well in larger centers. By adding more children to those classes, you are hindering her ability not only to concentrate, but also to receive the individualized support that she needs and has a right to. Statistically, these classes will not shrink, but continue to increase in size as the needs of the children in our community continue to rise. People who have children with extra needs look for districts like ours to meet their children's needs. This is why we moved to Hilton. These children deserve to receive the education and support that are laid out in their IEPs. My daughter's IEP states that she needs to be in a 12-11, not a 13, 14, or 15-11. Hilton needs to consider adding additional self-contained classes to meet the needs of our children and not continue to ask the state for variances per year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the May 27 meeting. Kaylee, second. Nancy, any discussion? Favor, six oh. Report from board members. I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report from, nothing to report.
I have a brief report. On May 28, I went to Monroe County School Board Annual Dinner, which was very nice, and they did honor Teresa, although she couldn't be there, as she will be retiring from our board after our next meeting. I also attended on June 4, the Legislative Committee of Monroe County School Boards, and we got to listen to Regent Hale and Norwood, and their primary purpose was to kind of shed more light on what's going on at the state level and how is what's going on at the federal level impacting the state level, which since it's a continually changing situation, it's good to kind of hear from people who are in Albany and can update us on what's actually going on and what we should worry about for our schools and for our students. And then last night, I went to Bravo Night, and I just wanted to echo what Dr. Costor said. It was an amazing celebration of our students, nine through 12. I'm continually amazed at Bravo Night as to how many awards our kids earn. I think it's really impressive that we have so many kids earning so many awards from colleges, from the community, and everywhere in between. And so, it was, our district staff did a great job organizing it, but what stayed with me the most was like how amazing the students in our district really are. So, thank you for that.
So, attended the annual meeting. It was nice to celebrate neighboring districts. We've had board members who have served for over 20 years, and they're retiring now. That was really great. Legislative committee, it was very good to hear from the regions and also that our legislative liaison has developed a relationship with those two regions, that it comes back to us within Monroe County. I mean, Regent Hale was a graduate of the City School District. I think that's an important connection, and that's been really great. I had the opportunity to volunteer at Science Monday. I missed the fireworks, so to speak. And it was great to see one of our Friends of Education, Airplane Guy, who was also present, and the number of parents and the staff members and our high school students who came in to share their expertise with science, and it was really great.
This is a short report. I was able to go to Merton Williams chorus concert. Great to see a great turnout by a number of community members backing the art for it. Kids did a great job.
All right, first up, we have old business. We have a couple of policies that we're going to pull through. Policy on next, captain, sure we're building facilities, and policy on student personal technology. Or a motion to approve. Christine, second by Stephanie. Any discussion? All in favor, six oh. All right, next up, we have dissent. We have an addendum. Dissent runs all the way through J with an addendum. Do I have a motion to approve the dissent with the addendum?
So.
Nancy followed by Christine. Any discussion? All in favor, six oh. All right, with that, now that it's official, I would like to recognize Betsy for her 28 years of service. Well, we knew that was going to be official, right? But the passing of the torch, so Betsy is leaving us, and Michelle is taking over. leaving us, and Michelle is taking over as our clerk, as well as Dr. Kusorak's administrative assistant, so she's not getting away from us. So thank you very much, Betsy, for everything. And Michelle, thank you for your continued support of the board. All right, closing of the meeting. We've got a few more events coming up, and then we have our board meeting, and then there is graduation after the next board meeting. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend. It's the same night as Arcadia. Not sure who's attending, or the rest of the group. Hopefully, we can have a little bit of a representation. But I hate to be at Arcadia that night with some seniors I've had in the last four years, so I'd miss you. I will miss the alarm, walk through the tunnel, out of the ice rink. It's always fun. I always love that. It's a good time. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Nancy, do I have a second? Ed, any discussion on that one? All in favor? 6-0. Thank you, everybody.